Like to call this meeting to order on May 11, 2021 at 7:01. And tonight, we have a presentation from CPAC. And I think Holly is here and I just is here also. I think I saw her there.
Yes, hello.
Who's going to speak?
I'm going to speak tonight. Okay. Um, so I'm Holly Johnson. I'm co-chair of the district CPAC Special Education Parent Advisory Council. And we are here tonight submitting this report as part of a CPAC's duties required by law in Massachusetts. This is our very first year doing this because the CPAC officially passed by laws and elected board members just dispatched March 2020, right before all the closures. Um, since our first year. And it has been a difficult year for everybody. And so I just want to start out by thanking all the teachers, the IAs, the support staff, just everybody for going above and beyond for their students this year. The flexibility and dedication they have shown this year has been amazing and we are so appreciative. We worked with administration this year around COVID planning to get IEP students as much in-person learning as possible. And while there were some delays for some families overall, we feel the district did a really great job providing in-person learning opportunities, really for all students, particularly students with IEPs. Of course, uh, students on IEPs are still going to take longer to catch up and adjust to changes and would like these long-term needs to be kept in mind in future years during programming and budgeting plans. We also recommend that the district provide professional development and training on managing behavioral issues to all teachers, gen ed, special ed, service providers, IAs, and develop individual action plans to support students, especially in light of these additional issues code restrictions may have caused. It's so important for this people working with these kids to really be trained in de-escalation and and behavior issues to really, you know, help these students learn. With the support from the special ed department, we were able to hold our monthly meetings and workshops remotely via Zoom. The first portion of all our meetings are open to everyone and usually include a presentation and updates. And this is followed by our private support group for caregivers. We've also recently added what we're calling Coffee and Conversation, which is a more informal chat for caregivers that's happening once a month on Tuesday mornings. Um, we really appreciate the support the CPAC has been getting this year from district administrators and all of you on the school committee. We've built really strong relationships over the years with um the early childhood and elementary administrators. And we are working on strengthening our relationships with administrators at Frontier and really learning more about the special ed program at Frontier. I think we tend to get younger families, so we are just, we have really good relationships with the elementary school. We're working to um learn more about what happens at Frontier and be more involved. We've also, board members have regularly attended the special ed strategic planning committee meetings throughout the year. And we've met with various administrators to discuss COVID planning, elementary technology, elementary professional development, frontier IEPs, and 504s and disability inclusion. Um, we've also had admins, principals, staff, and school committee members attend some of our monthly meetings and some have given presentations. Of course, all this wonderful things happening in this district, we are tasked with the responsibility to evaluate the SPED program. And we do have some concerns district-wide regarding special ed compliance, documentation, communication, and training to varying degrees throughout the district. So if a family or staff or community member feels that a school is not meeting legal requirements, they can file a complaint with DESI using DESI's Problem Resolution System or PRS. PRS then investigates that complaint and decides whether or not the school is in compliance of the law. Unfortunately, due to delay with PRS, we do not have official numbers and data from them. We've only have what we heard from families and we have not heard from any Frontier families saying that they have filed a complaint this year. In addition to PRS, families can also contact the Bureau of Special Education Appeals or BSEA about special education concerns. The BSEA conducts due process hearings and renders rulings and decisions. The BSA does not keep data for individual schools. It just has kind of district-wide data and they have received 11 notifications of rejected IEPs and provided one informational training for our district in the past year. However, I'm not sure how how accurate that 11 rejected IP number may be because it has been come clear that these rejected, partially rejected, and unsigned IEPs were not reported to the state until recently. So a family receives their IP and they sign it to accept it, reject, partially reject. If the IP is is partially rejected, fully rejected, or hasn't been signed within 30 days, the district needs to report that to the state. And then the state sends an informational packet home to families to explain their rights and and next steps and give them a lot of helpful information. So if the district doesn't report the unsigned IEPs, then those families don't get that much needed information. We've also compiled concerns from families through meetings and and emails and surveys. And when we see the same concern multiple times from different families, we included it in our report. So overall, again, the SPED teachers and the IAs and the service providers are just amazing. They foster these really personal relationships with their students and create a wonderful sense of community, a community that is just a huge strength and plus for our district. On an administrative level, there are concerns again with documentation adherence to legal timelines. State and federal laws make it very clear what documentation is required and when it needs to be provided to caregivers. And we've heard numerous violations of these laws. And the frequency of these complaints varies by school. That probably sounds like a paperwork issue and doesn't sound super important. However, when these things are delayed, services are delayed and evaluations are delayed. And it's, the state has these timelines in place so that students get what they need as soon as possible. And the process from evaluation to IP should take about, should take 45 days and it definitely takes longer than that. Sometimes twice as long. And then from the time you have your IP meeting to the time you're supposed to have that document in your hand is two weeks. And we hear reports that it's weeks or months longer than that. And that leads to delays in services and that kind of builds up over the years. We have also reviewed the district's policies and procedures. There's actually um a procedures manual that is well-written. However, it is difficult to find on the district website and most families aren't aware that this manual exists. So we would recommend that professional development on this uh special education procedures manual is given to all SPED teachers and service providers and that the document is distributed to parents and teachers on a yearly basis, along with what we call an IEP timeline cheat sheet, which is basically a one-page that very clearly shows you the IEP timeline and and when things need to happen. We are also recommending that um IEP meetings can be streamlined by using a meeting summary template, which is found in the district's SPED procedures manual, but we don't often see used at meetings. And we'd like the district-wide anti-racism initiative, which is great to continue to include students with disabilities as well. So that that was basically an overview of the district. I'm just going to speak briefly on Frontier in particular. So in the district, there's a total of 326 students on IEPs. 125 of those students are at Frontier, making up 19% of the total student population at Frontier. There are 10 special education teachers, so that means that the ratio between students and IEPs to SPED teacher is 13 to 1. The main concern we hear from families um at Frontier is around transitions. Families have said that they weren't able to observe potential placement options for their children, which makes it harder for them to decide, you know, where they want to put their children and what's best for them. And they've stated that they did not know who their IEP liaison was year to year, so who they would go to with questions and concerns. And that there wasn't an adequate transition plan in place, which is, it's important to have that transition plan. So our recommendation would be that a phone call, an email, or um a full transition meeting is offered to all IEP students every school year. Finally, there's been concerns around school culture at Frontier, which you're all aware of and working very hard to to improve with the Anti-Racism Committee. But we we do want you to be aware that there have been complaints of derogatory name-calling towards students with disabilities by their peers at Frontier. And we we recommend that policies, procedures, and school culture be updated to include equity for disabled students and that um there's professional development on providing cultural responsible, responsive classrooms in regards to physical, sensory, cognitive, emotional, and behavioral disabilities. And that that's pretty much all I have. I know it was a lot. If you, I really appreciate everyone giving us the time, putting us on the agenda and listening to our report. If you have any questions, I can try and answer them.
I got a Damian Fosn. I just got a real quick question. Um, I really appreciate your report and all the information you gave. Um, and just to kind of clarify some of the um material that you talked about. Were those surveys that you put out, was it a a data kind of driven where you got some of that information or is, I guess, I'm just curious how you came up with some of the concerns that you have, where that came from?
That concerns were brought to us by families. We have distributed surveys over the course of the year. We have an email list of families that we communicate with on a regular basis. Families reach out to us with their concerns via email or they come to meetings or support groups. And we compiled it that way. Like I, like I said, if it's, if we hear the same complaint multiple times, then it made the report.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure.
Does anybody else have a question for Holly? Holly, thank, oh, Keith?
No, I I I'm just wondering um special education students are really um there's a, Holly, you mentioned paperwork is like the big issue. That's what I, you know, there's a lot of of time that goes into that. So like the two things that stuck out to me for one was, is there a mechanism before you have to go to a PRS complaint or BSA complaint? Is there a mechanism that you can address right to the school right away that could limit the amount of time it has to go to the state? And then the second one, and I know maybe this is to Darius, so for me as a classroom teacher, I'll get upwards of 12 to 20 IEPs and they're 25 to 30 pages each. So right at the beginning, I got like three to 500 pages of reading. And I honestly can't really absorb that with any real, so I try to like narrow it down. And you mentioned a cheat sheet. Is there any way that that the the massive amount of data can be streamlined for the classroom teachers? And this is different from a substantially separate student versus a student who's streamlined, that that it can be streamlined so that the the classroom teacher can take that data in in a couple of pages rather than like hundreds and hundreds of pages? So I guess those are my two questions.
Yes. Well, first, um, before you file a PRS, we would recommend go to first your SPED liaison, your principals, your directors, although, you know, you you send emails and and um but you you work, we obviously recommend you try to work with the teachers in the school before it gets to you sending a peer, you know, a complaint or going to BSEA. But there are instances where, you know, you're at an impasse or things aren't working out and you kind of have to take the next step. But it's not, it's not the first step. We would not recommend that to be the first step. As far as um the the dense IEP, it's huge. As a parent, I've read so many and they're hard to get through for my one kid. I can't imagine a teacher trying to take that all in, especially as a gen ed teacher or something. I have seen um in my research, it's it's called like a one sheet. And it's a very brief summary of the child's disabilities, needs, accommodations. And it's a one sheet. I don't, I haven't seen it in in this district, but it's definitely something that um I think we could have, especially I think at Frontier, or at the, you know, when you have that many students and it is, it just kind of boils down your IEP to highlights or a 504, just a one sheet. So I think that's something that you guys could look into. There's examples, just if you Google it.
But yeah, I've I've kind of learned to try to negotiate them, but it it can still be a little bit overwhelming and and uh and what it came, when I've questioned it, it comes back to legally, we have to provide you with the entire document. And then that's what makes it difficult.
And I'm sorry, can I chime in real quick? And I I I know for a fact, a number of our special education teachers do that for the, they'll do it for their teachers. They'll do the one sheet. So that that they will have access to that as well. So that we that we do do that at Frontier.
And we also have team meetings for transition between grade levels. So the seventh grade SPED liaison meets the eighth grade SPED line, goes through the caselistings, what they've been working on. And they do that each step of the way. And so and then in high school, the SPED liaisons will go around and talk with each of the teachers on their caseload. Uh, the students are in the, the students' teacher of each of their caseload and go through that. Again, it's a lot of time. And so do they know everybody's SPED plan inside and out on the first day of school? It may take several days as they as they go back. They they start that process now. And each student coming into Frontier has a, has a transition meeting um in which we send um we have our team leader here at the middle school, goes down and meets with the family and talks about the transition and and modifies um needed to plan to into Frontier. So that's happening as well. So there is, there is uh some of those things are happening. Maybe you spelled it out better, but you know, looking at that report. There's a lot of good things in the report of things that we we do need to work on. And uh, so we're going to add that to a part of our SPED strategic plan and how we're going to enroll that out and take the data from that report as well.
I will say that I did meet myself personally with Carolyn Eddy, the team leader at Frontier and she's, she's great and she, that's her job with the transitions and working with everybody. My, speaking with her, I would think that sometimes um parents may not be as aware that they can reach out. They don't have to wait to be reached out to. They can reach out at any time. Carolyn Eddy's available to to answer questions. So just a matter of of getting that sort of information out there a little bit more for families that are struggling with transitions, but um I, she, she was great. I learned a lot from her. I think I took five pages of notes when I met with her. And she, she does a lot of work there at Frontier.
Hi, Karen Ferrandino. For those of you who don't know me, Director of Student Services, Special Education. I just was in an earlier meeting where Asia went over the report specific to the earlier elementary school that had their school committee meeting. And I just want to say, if it's a thorough report that was submitted yesterday and I really want to take the time to kind of go over it to, you know, really look at priorities and continue communication with the CPAC. But as far as school committee, if you have time to, there's a written report to kind of look at it and digest it if you have any questions for me. As we continue in the process, working to improve and and strengthen the foundation of our special education programs, I'd be happy to come back and answer any questions that you might have specific to the report, questions, concerns, ideas. But I also want to thank Asia and Holly and the commitment talking about the organization of the CPAC and and building it into elected officials of the CPAC and really kind of organizing that and the ongoing communication. And I know there's a lot of effort and time and what's the word I'm looking for? Commitment of care, care, absolute care in what they're doing and building the community. And I just want to thank you for your time and your communication.
Thanks, Holly.
Thank you.
Okay, how about we review the minutes from April 6, please? Motion, second.
Motion from Judy.
Second. Thank you, Bill. Roll call.
Bob?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yeah.
Bill?
Yes.
Olivia?
Yes.
Judy, yes. Mary?
Yes.
Damian?
Yes, Mary is delayed.
Key?
Yes.
Uh, Missy?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. Shelley, you there?
I am. I'm here.
With big smiles tonight. You want to give us our parental report, please?
Sure. Uh, so 20 warrants were signed since the last meeting. I think Mr. Holla came in today, actually reviewed and signed them. Thank you for that. The total, Judy, is in the report that I shared, but for the record, you got it?
Yep.
Okay, I'll I'll rattle it off just just so we have it recorded. Two million, four hundred, forty thousand, four hundred, eleven dollars and seventy-nine cents. I sent the expense reports. That's through April 30th for School Choice and the General Fund. Things are on track, you know, as we anticipated they would be with overages or expenditures in specific accounts, but I'm happy to take questions. You know, we're really starting to look closely at each budget line, paying a little bit more attention to what's left in certain lines now that we're nearing the end of the year. George and I have had a conversation about supplies and materials and making sure that POs are in the system and everything is encumbered so that we can start to get a more realistic number at where we are at for the end of the year because we do have some savings in certain lines. Transportation is just one example of where we have some savings because of contract negotiations this year with the educational model. So you know, we may be making some adjustments to accounts, reallocating things from or to School Choice, typical process for this time of year. And I am in conversation with the auditor about doing some pre-planning for E and D, just to make sure that we are on top of all of that. I do know that we are going to have to compensate for the school lunch deficit. This is something that we've been talking about since last May, probably. You know, I I think we're going to be close to a zero balance. But you know, I'm still sort of estimating what those amounts are and we really should go into next year with some type of cushion. We have savings from general fund budget, like I just talked about, that we can move those wages onto the general fund and not have to hit any other funding sources such as School Choice. But we're, you know, we're close to surpassing revenue with our expenses. So Jeff and I are in conversation about that and projecting out what the rest of the year looks like. And then I also just wanted to give you an update on COVID expenses. So we do have some funds remaining in federal and state grants. Again, in conversation with George and other administrators about how to spend that money down, whether it's tent rentals, buying more chairs or tables. To date, I believe we've spent about $350,000 on COVID-related needs, primarily funded either from our Fortown Municipal Cares Act or grant funding. Some things have hit the local budget. If you look at buildings and supplies, for example, in the general fund report, you will see that's over. That's in part because of HVAC expenses that were higher than we anticipated. But for the most part, we've been really fortunate and been able to cover all of these unknown needs this year with funds outside of our School Choice or outside of our budget. So we're grateful for that. That's all I have right now. More to be discussed, I think, later on finances. But yeah, Damian, you have a question?
Yeah, the um, one could make an argument that the lunch budget has been tight because of COVID. I know, just speaking from personal experience, my kids have not gotten school lunch just because of the way the school day has progressed and the way they have to eat it and so forth. It's just easier for them to bring in their own lunch. So if we are short with that lunch budget, could we use the extra remaining COVID funds to supplement that?
So Darius, please correct me if I'm wrong, but from what I'm understanding and reading so far, the funds that have been available to date, you cannot offset revenue loss. You can use those funds to pay for expenditures, but they have to be unbudgeted expenses. So we haven't had that instance in school lunch. Our real problem is that we do not have à la carte available in the way that we have in the past. And while numbers are down for one, a lot of kids are not eating. But when they are eating, they're getting free and it's basically just the lunch that's available. We're selling some chips and some drinks, but in prior years, we've done between 50 and $75,000 in um our items, like, you know, kids go and get an ice cream after they eat their two slices of pizza. We're not doing that this year. And that is COVID-related, but you can't, as far as I understand it, offset revenue. It is unfortunate. I I heard that with S R three funding that could be funding you coming, you could do that. But I don't have enough guidelines on it yet unless Darius has other information that I'm not seeing. But even if we can get back to a spot where we can open up those à la carte things again, we'll be in a much better position than we are this year.
Okay, thanks. Does anybody else have any questions for Shelley? If there's no other questions for Shelley, thank you, Shelley. And we'll go on to, believe it or not, there's no public comment tonight. Uh, next one would be student council report. And where's Ms. Leomond?
I'm right here.
Where? I don't see you yet. Oh, there you are.
Hi. So I'm Maddie, as you guys probably know, and for the last time, um, I'm here with the student council report. Um, today I'm also joined by Harrison Wright. He is one of our new co-presidents for the student council. Um, so so far, student council has talked about trying to get that club fair into action that we've talked about for months now. Trying to confirm the step update um with administration and see, seeing if we can get just a few clubs to be there for the incoming middle schoolers. And besides that, Isabel and I, the president and vice president, would like to thank you guys for um listening to us for this past year. And I would also like to thank you for listening to me talk about student council for two and a half years. I'm really thankful for this opportunity and you guys have been, I'm tearing up, oh my God. And you guys have been um just so supportive of all of our endeavors. So I just want to thank you.
Cool. Can you, hey, Harrison, can you come on so we can see what you look like?
Something is wrong with my camera. I'm not sure. I look like I'm dark, but I'm not at all. I don't know what's happening.
Well, we could see, everybody could see him, right? We just want to see who the person's going to take this wonderful lady's place, so. Okay, next thing is unfinished business, COVID update?
Keith was waving something. Yeah, I got a quick question. Could I ask Madeline or Harrison the student perspective on how like the prom and those end of years, like that stuff went? I read in George's report, but I'd like to wonder how students think.
Yes. Can you still hear me?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so prom was great. I had a great time. I loved it. Everybody looked great. I know I keep saying that. I think the parents who pitched in did a wonderful job. Administration did a great job. I had so much fun. Um, and I wouldn't trade it for the world. Everybody looks so pretty. And as of end of the year things, you know, seniors, we've got like two and a half weeks left. That's been a bit stressful for everybody with AP exams, um, you know, finishing sports seasons and just trying to regulate our lives. The graduation schedule has been put out, so everybody's planning on what they're going to do for that along with um sort of finals and um our last day of classes. It's just been bittersweet for everyone and everybody is sort of getting emotional as we enter these last few weeks. emotional as we enter these last few weeks, um, not just me, um, but a lot of my friends, a lot of our parents. Um, it's just an interesting time, and I don't think we're ready.
Well, you've been only been going to school for over 12 years, so.
So I would, I would just like to say that, uh, last year's seniors, it was, it was a rush for them. It happened fast. But this year's seniors have gone through this a long time, and so I'm, I'm just really happy that the prom worked out and the end of years festivities are really working out for you guys and that you're really appreciating it, and I, and I hope that it's a great ending for you because it's been a, been the hardest year of probably any seniors that have ever gone through high school. So I'm just really happy that the, the end is at least, uh, positive for you.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just chip in and say that was, as, as usual, just a wonderful report, and thank you so much.
Anybody else want to share anything else?
I'll make sure to send her, you know, all of our meetings, so she doesn't feel lonely at school.
From a proud mama.
Thanks.
Okay, we're gonna go on to, uh, COVID update. Ms. Do, uh, Medessa, please?
Hey, Buck, do you want to just do our guests right off that we kind of talked about? So let's have the anti-racism and then our, our Washington DC trip.
Okay. I see, I saw somebody on, uh,
Kelsey, I think is here.
Kelsey's on, yep.
Yes, I am. Um, and I apologize, my camera is not working, and I failed to grab a Chromebook on my way out of work today. So I apologize for not having video. Um, so we're kind of winding down here at the end of the year. Um, we, tomorrow is our first in-person discussion group. So we've been doing these virtual Wednesday discussions, um, since January, February. So for these last couple of Wednesdays in May, we're inviting students to get together in person, which is a little bit of a different, um, different vibe than being virtual. So it'll be interesting to see how that impacts the discussion. Um, just giving them a chance to reflect on all the different, the different discussion topics we've had. Um, and also hearing from them what their visions are for Frontier moving forward, um, and what they would like to see happen at the school. Um, so we're excited for those conversations to happen. Um, and like I said, the first one's tomorrow. Um, there will be a full committee meeting before the end of the school year, um, so that we can clarify priorities for next year. Um, so that when we come back in the fall, we're clear on what we want to accomplish and what direction we're headed in. Um, so I did want to give you all an opportunity to ask any questions about the work that we've done this year. Um, and also let me know if there are any, any topics or concerns that you want to make sure, um, we, we, the whole committee is thinking about as we're moving, um, as we're planning for next year and moving forward.
Anybody could chime in if they like?
So, uh, I will. Kelsey, so after, after, after this first year, has, has there been a uh, noticeable, uh, uh, impact? Um, it just, you know, is, I, I'm not, not saying as if I expect there to be, but has there been, oh, i- is it a kinder, gentler little world there?
That, it's, it, that's a tough thing to measure, um, especially with this year being hybrid. But I will say, I think there's definitely a notable, um, heightened level of awareness. Um, I think if you stop most students in the hall and ask them if they've heard of anti-racism, they will probably be able to say yes, and might even be able to tell you what it is. Um, so the eighth grade right now is working on their, their civics project that's required by the state. And I've had, and part of that is there, they have to reach out to, to resources. So I've had one group that reached out to me, um, because they wanted to put together a group for education about racism against, um, Asian Americans. And then I had another group that reached out to me, um, wanting to put together resources for teaching students about implicit bias. And that's, that's ideas that these eighth graders came up with on their own for their group project. Um, so I do think that, I do think seeds have been planted. Um, and I think especially in the high school, we are seeing that there are students who are really passionate about this and excited about these topics and really want to engage, um, with this kind of material.
I see, um, I see Missy had her hand up.
Yeah, I'm not sure that this all, uh, it's still kind of formulating in my head, so I hope it comes across okay. Um, I'm, I've seen this kind of come up both in public comments, uh, with community members, and it sounds like this has come up, um, with students as well. And I wonder whether or not there's some, some work that can be done on kind of how to engage in conversations with each other and keep this in a respectable, respectable, productive, uh, way to, to engage in conversations with people who may have different opinions about some of these topics that oftentimes kind of bring on some passionate sides for, for people on, on different spectrums, uh, in regards to diversity.
Yes, absolutely. Um, and that is part of what we've been doing with kind of this pilot program this year with the discussion groups, um, of giving students the opportunity to, to talk about some uncomfortable topics and, um, have some differing opinions, um, to sort of give them practice doing that. And then next year, we actually have a class, um, that will run every other day all year, um, where we'll be training students more or less to facilitate these kinds of conversations and giving them those, um, active listening skills, conflict, conflict resolution, um, so that they are comfortable leading these discussions with their classmates. Um, and we can really have that be a wider practice throughout the whole school. Um, and we really establish those norms of, okay, this is how we disagree in a respectful way.
And is that both in-person and through, uh, other media platforms?
Ah, you mean social media? Uh, so I believe the class is called Media Activism and, and Social Change. Uh, so yes, that can absolutely be a topic, um, because I'm aware that, um, students, what students are willing to say in class and in front of adults can often be very different from what they post on their personal accounts.
And interact with those is, is different too, right?
Right, right. And it's, you know, it's tricky because we as a school, you know, we're limited in, in how much control we have over what students are posting on their personal accounts. But, um, I do think that over time, we can set a precedent and we can kind of shift the culture of, um, of how students interact with their, with their media accounts, um, and just the level of, the level of respect and kindness that we all have for each other.
Thanks.
Anybody else have a question for Kelsey?
Yeah. I have a question, um, Kelsey. So thinking back on, I think it was our last meeting, and we had during public comment, people who had some other perspectives, um, maybe not in what you were doing, but some of the hows. And your group, you know, encouraged people to open those dialogues and contact, um, contact you and have those discussions. And I was just wondering if that has moved forward at all, if you've heard from anybody or have a plan to open those conversations with families?
I have not been contacted by anyone. Um, I don't believe Amanda has. Um, and I know that, I know that folks reach out to admin on a fairly regular basis. So I don't know if they've, they've had any specific updates since that meeting. Um, but in terms of having a community discussion, I think, I think there is a lot of value in that. Um, and I think it's also something that we would probably want to wait until we can do it in person. Um, I think that that, that would be valuable to be able to sit down together, um, as a community and actually like physically see each other's faces and be in, in space together, um, to have these conversations. But I do think, um, I do think a parent info night, um, or some community discussions would really be beneficial. Um, so that parents and families in the community in general, um, is a little bit more comfortable with what's being, what's being taught in school, what's going on in school. Um, because I know that there is, sometimes there is that fear that it's, it's getting very political and we're trying to, you know, influence students a certain way, and it's really, that's really not what it's about. It's about, um, it's about learning about the society that we live in. It's about learning to recognize our own bias and the way that we can support things that are problematic without even knowing we're supporting things that are problematic and how we can change that as we move forward, um, to really make everything better for everybody.
Right. Thank you. I was hoping that, you know, before we get to the point where you're ready for a bigger community discussion, that maybe some of the smaller conversations and, um, people would feel comfortable reaching out. So I'm still hopeful that that will happen.
Thanks, Mary. Anybody else have anything for Kelsey? Kelsey, thanks for coming and giving us an update.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. It's always a pleasure to be here.
Take care now.
You too.
We're gonna jump up. We have, uh, Melissa and Jason here on the Washington trip. So since they're waiting for us, we'll have them come on and, and try to coax us on voting them to go to Washington DC next year, so.
Hi, everybody. Uh, good to see all of you. Uh, my name is Jason Smith. I teach eighth grade civics and history at Frontier. This is my 21st year. Uh, and, uh, I'm also the eighth grade team leader. Um, it's hard to believe that last year, February 2020, we, late February into early March 2020, we made it to Washington DC successfully and had a absolutely wonderful trip. And all to find that the world was changing before our eyes. Uh, it's, it's pretty surreal to think back at, at that, as I'm sure you all can imagine. Um, I'm proud to just talk about this trip with you briefly, and then I'll pass it over to Melissa. It turns out I, I, last time I presented, I said it was the 30th year. Well, I stand corrected. This coming year, if this all can go forward, would be the 30th year, so my mistake there. Uh, Bob Smith and Walt Quinn, some of the originators and the creators of the trip were, reminded me that. And, um, I'm thankful for all the work that they put into, to laying this foundation for us. Um, needless to say, I think most of you probably know this has turned, evolved into really a signature experience for Frontier kids and families. Um, kids talk about this trip for years and years after, um, in, through high school and, and beyond. Um, it's for, for some of these kids, it is truly a life-changing experience. I think it hits developmentally and curricular-wise perfectly in the eighth grade. Um, especially now that the eighth grade curriculum for civics and history is US civics. That's really the thrust of the, the curriculum now. Um, so we, we love doing it. We certainly missed it this year. Uh, we have heard from some students, some parents and, and our, my colleagues about the, the hope and the desire to continue this tradition, to, to make sure that we are able to hold on to this trip as the years go by, despite the, the, uh, potential challenges and hurdles that we, you know, may see moving forward and given these unique circumstances. Um, so that being said, we, we know there, there are some, uh, unpredictable things possibly coming up, some, some circumstances that we may not be able to, uh, fully understand quite yet. Uh, but luckily, one, uh, one thing we feel real excited about is Melissa Strokey has taken over the coordination and the planning and the booking of the trips. We have in-house booking, thanks to Melissa for the past few years, which has enabled the families to save significant amounts of money over the years. Um, I think, um, I'd like to hand it off to her now, so she can kind of give her, her angle on, on how, how we're looking ahead to this, the potential trip, uh, for this coming year, so. Uh, and we certainly ask, answer questions afterwards. So Melissa, if you're ready. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Um, so yeah, um, I've had the pleasure of, um, coordinating the trip with, uh, Jason and the eighth grade team for the past few years. Um, and in thinking about next year, um, we have a lot of, as Jason said, um, hopes for bringing back the trip and, and you know, we've had a lot of talks about this. Um, we obviously don't have any hard data of what we can expect next year to look like or what this might mean for the trip. Um, uh, but we, we just kind of have, we kind of can't help ourselves in, in dreaming about the possibility. Um, and so what we're hoping, uh, optimistically to bring forth for next year is, um, something that hasn't happened since the first year, uh, this trip actually ran. So, um, we're hoping to, uh, have an eighth and ninth grade parallel trip, uh, for those eighth graders who weren't able to go this past year. Um, so they wouldn't all be going to all the places together because it's just, it might be too large of a group, but parallel trips going at the same time. Um, and the first time they tried to actually do this trip, they had to delay, um, because of Operation Desert Storm. So they could not go that first year, and they promised all the eighth graders that they'd bring them next year. And so the first trip ended up being a combined eighth and ninth grade trip. Um, and so, so that's what we're kind of proposing, um, tonight, when in high hopes. And we recognize that, you know, due to the past year, um, there's been many hardships. Um, we definitely need, you know, a lot more support, you know, from the, uh, and looking at our whole school community and kind of pulling in support for financial aid, um, to ensure that all students would be able to go who'd want to. Um, and, you know, looking at this past year, right? We really have like a, an amazingly supportive school community, so I have no doubt, um, that is possible. Um, and so there's still many unknowns, but we're passing it off here, seeing what your thoughts are. If you want to give us permission to move forward in, in this endeavor. Um, and, uh, we'd love to answer, uh, questions to the best of our abilities. Thank you for your concern, Miss.
Melissa, the biggest question, I guess, oh, there's a lot of big question, but how much is it this year or next year versus years ago? You know, our prices, I know you're doing everything, so thank you for doing that and saving us money. But, you know, I mean, how much do the kids have to come up with for each individual?
Yeah, I think, Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, um, was it under 700 last year or a couple of years ago?
I believe it is just under hovering right around the, right around the 700 mark, but everything included, every single meal. Whereas before, the several meals, you had to kind of add in on top and kids had to pack, pack, you know, more, more money in their wallet and so forth. So, so hovering right around 700, maybe off by $10 in either direction, something like that. But, but every, every, in theory, you wouldn't have to bring a nickel on the trip. Every single thing's paid for.
Wow.
Yeah, when we, when we switch, we're saving almost $200 a student.
Wow, perfect. We got some hands up. Olivia's first.
Um, sure. So in the past, my kids both went and they absolutely loved it, and I am, you know, hopeful, um, that this can also happen. But in the past, um, there were overarching fundraisers that they would do as a big group, but then there were also ways that if you went, if you did a lot of fundraising, you could really, you know, get down your, um, amount, um, so that you weren't, you know, if the whole class put in 50% worth of effort, then that was great and they raised some. But if you really knew, like, you needed to raise some money and you went to work and you raised a ton personally, that you, a percent of that went to yours, so you could really bring down, make it affordable. Is that still kind of your plan?
Um, and, and Jason, speak, you can speak more to this too. Um, I think like everything is on the floor, so we're not, so we, when we were thinking about it, we were thinking not just like even past fundraises, but we're like, we're gonna have to come up with something even bigger to, to really kind of create a larger scholarship fund that we can draw from. And yeah, we're, you know, we were kind of brainstorming, like, if we, you know, Yeah, we're, you know, we were kind of brainstorming like if we, you know, hoping to maybe have like. Um, a a group of community members who would be on board for helping to coordinate fundraising in some ways too.
Like a spaghetti dinner or something?
Yeah, this this for quite a number of years, there was the fish fry and that that was that was amazing. And um. Uh, of course, Bob Smith and Don Gordon and others kind of helped put all that together, but uh that would raise a huge. Fund that was all scholarship. So that was. In other words, if if a kid sold ten tickets, it didn't necessarily. Um, lessen their price, their individual price. It was all, let's put it into the big pot. For all the, you know, there's usually quite a few students who who need significant help. Uh, those last two or three years, we tried something a little bit different. We tried a calendar raffle where it's where it's kind of a. You get a little bit of both. You get you'll get the general fund, but then the more tickets you sell, that also can trim down your cost. Um, and we've also done a couple of additional smaller supplemental. There used to be Hillside Pizza around the Super Bowl time. That that one, I think, was geared toward trimming down your own cost. Um, I think last year we threw in a, you know, Chipotle, you buy certain things, you know, that Chipotle restaurant a certain night that. Gives the class a little more scholarship fund. Uh, we did penny wars where. Kids would put coins in different jars trying to compete, you know, different classes against each other. And again, that was more general fund. So but as Melissa said, I think we really have to sit down and think about what's. The most efficient, the most beneficial, um. You know, within reason, and that's why we're, I think that's why she mentioned. We may need a little, given the circumstances, given people's financial situations possibly. We might just need to be able to reach out a little bit more and. Get other ideas or other people who might be willing to organize or help organize something. Um, so that we can, so that we can manage it. I usually write a bunch of letters to local organizations and and we've been really lucky. Some local organizations have. Uh, like the Polish American Citizens Club and. Uh, others that my brain isn't allowing me to think of at this moment have have been really generous and 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 donating. So there's that too. But uh, again, since it's, we're just a little tentative on exactly what form that will take right this moment. Given, do we just have to really sort through our landscape together?
Got it. Missy, you're next.
I have a couple of logistical questions. Um, and I'm. I I can't even imagine trying to plan for all the potential change in nine months after this past year we've had, but um. Wondering what kind of busing capacity changes you guys might be thinking about. This is a lot of kids to be taking, and I don't know whether or not. Uh, how many, what the increase in buses might be looking out that far, or if you guys have looked at that?
I have no idea. Um, and like, like I said, there are so many unknowns. Um. And and it's interesting because when we were first, you know, thinking about it back in February, we're like, oh, there's no way. There's no way it can happen. And like, it's such a different world now than it is in February. So. It's, there's, yeah, I I'm not sure. Like, it's gonna, I feel like it'll probably be more of like. Having to figure out that that flexibility and, you know, that closer planning, but this is, this is where we definitely need. Need support and and it's and it's hard to, um. You know, know like, you know, today we might need, you know, six buses for, um. You know, seventy five students. And then in three months, will that change? Um, yeah.
And I'm hopefully vaccination stat, which has been expanded to include. Kids that are in this age group, you know, hopefully that helps to maybe. Send us in a path where you don't have to restrict those buses quite as much, but I guess that's kind of another component is whether or not. There's some different criteria for kids that have been vaccinated versus not vaccinated because there's a different safety. Profile there. I just, I I'm just thinking about these things from, again, from a logistical standpoint, but um. And that's a lot so far ahead of time. It's hard to predict what things will look like.
Thanks, Missy.
Yeah.
Uh, Keith, you're next.
So as a father of a of a daughter who went a couple of years ago and a daughter who was not able to go last year. You came on and said, I'm Jason Smith, and I want to talk about Washington DC, and you had my vote right away. So like this. It has become a rite of passage. She's really excited about going. Um, I thank you for even thinking about this right now and looking forward. It's really important for them. And I think um. You know, we'll do, every family will do what they can, but like a summer job is gonna be a great impetus for my daughter this year for like to raise money, like get to work.
Cool. Anybody else have a a question for Jason or Melissa?
It, if you don't mind me chiming in briefly, and and of course, there are forces beyond what things I can understand as far as whether the state will. You know, issue this, you know, guideline or when that might happen. Obviously, some of you, Darius, of course, are. Tapped into kind of how that information comes along. But I believe, Melissa, we could lay some groundwork if. If if you, if we get the approval to at least put some pieces in place. And then maybe be prepared to deal with whatever information is coming down the pipeline that will affect all the schools, all the districts, I would guess, about regarding field trips and such, so.
Jason, I think you kind of nailed it. I think you probably would want to just map out a calendar when, just like you used to do in the past about when the deadlines of certain things were going to be made, as well as the deadlines for decisions to make. And you're absolutely right. The the environment's gonna change every month. Three months ago was very different than today, and two months from now is gonna be very different as well. So. Um, and also on the fundraising thing, you're talking about, I think we really gonna have to look at private donations as well. I think fundraising spaghetti dinners are wonderful. When you walk away with two grand and you're gonna try to send two hundred kids, you're sending two classes worth, you know, that doesn't do enough. Um, and so while those things build community and makes ownership, I think we're also gonna try to have to do a stronger push to say, listen, folks. This is an important rite of passage and really go after that as well. Um, you know, get some bigger donations. Um, so anyway, and I say that out loud to people in the audience because. People know people who are in the private sector who, you know, they look for ways to give to the community and civic groups that, you know, sending a class to Washington DC to talk about. Um, how this country works and that kind of stuff is is more than just a rite of passage. Sometimes the only time they've ever been out of New England. You know, the only time they've been away from home multiple nights, you know, um, outside of family. So it's a big, it's a big deal. Thank you.
Missy, do you have another one? Another question?
I do. Uh, I am wondering whether or not uh whether or not there's any potential to look. At different timing. Uh, and I I'm again, just throwing this out there, having looked at this past year and what was happening shortly after the holidays. That I'd hate to have you guys put all this planning in and everybody get all their hopes up. I mean, I think it's a great trip and go for it, but I. I'm wondering if there might be some ability to try to plan for a less likely time for there to be a spike in cases. Uh, it just something to, for you guys to think about as you're trying to negotiate all the other unknowns with this.
Like the April vacation, maybe?
Something that's further away from right after. People have gotten together and and again, also that's something to think about with fundraising things that maybe having hundreds of people together with food is not. Really the, we don't want to doom the our own trip, right?
I think that's a great point. And traditionally, the reason the trip is in late February into March is because the crowds are so much less. It's easier to book and book things. Uh, you're not waiting in line for an hour trying to get into a museum and so forth, but I I think that's. Duly noted and we should, you know, we'll certainly the the crew that comes together will. I'm sure we'll talk about that.
If you go on Christmas, then you will avoid families getting together with their relatives and the crowds. So we could try that.
Anybody else have anything? If not, how about a motion in a second to approve this trip?
Hold on. That's what we're doing? We're planning the approval of the trip or the approval to plan? What are we doing?
Prove the trip.
Okay. For February twenty twenty two?
Yes.
Okay.
Do I have a second? Oh. Olivia made the motion. Yeah, Olivia made the motion.
Second.
Thank you, Bill. Do a roll call, Judy, please.
Bob?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Olivia?
Yes.
Judy, yes. Mary?
Yeah.
Uh, Damian?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Melissa? Oh, sorry, Missy.
That's all right.
And Bill, it's okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Jason, Melissa, thank you for coming.
Thanks for having us.
Thanks so much, everybody. Thank you all.
Okay, uh, we'll go back to uh some type of order. I know it screwed up Judy a little bit, but. She can handle it. Uh, Darius, COVID update?
Um, nothing huge other than the sense of, um, you know, we kind of, high school's back, um, middle and high school are back. And if you could just, I think Maddie kind of talked about that in her report that. The energy in the building is just unbelievable. And if you want a piece of that energy, stop by after school and just see the kids. They kind of just, they've washed off the 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 ick of. All the stuff that COVID has brought. And they just like, oh, no, you, I don't, you go out to watch a track practice or walk by a softball or baseball. I mean, it's the outdoor stuff that's going on right now. It's just like, it's it's normalcy. It feels good. Um, I was out there today and it felt good. To see, you know, this kids enjoying and smiling and laughing and interacting and and doing it well. So, um, and hearing about the prom and such, um. As well. It's just, you know, we're going the right direction. Within COVID, you know, as you probably saw last night, they did approve for twelve and up. For Pfizer, I'm in communications with, I'm talking with Carolyn Ness, who's also talking with people. Um, expanding that out, um, trying to figure out if we can do a vaccination um at the school. Um, they're doing something similar to that in Amherst, and I'm trying to, the problem is Pfizer is a little bit harder to get a hold of right now. Um, because of this. And so we're trying to work it out and see if it's possible, but those conversations are happening over the last few days. And so. Um, I'll let you know where we are with that. Um, but you know, the idea of trying to making it easier. Um, for students, and we talk a lot of this a lot in my administrative meetings. Um, we forget about access, you know, and someone would have to take a kid out of school, take them to somewhere. To get a vaccination, just like adults, you know, students also don't have the access to the readily. Um, people that get to a vaccination and that kind of stuff. So we want to provide that, um, you know, not force it down people's throats, so to speak, or in their arms. Um, but you know, really just provide the avenue so it's easy to do if that's what they want to do. Amy, I guess.
Yeah, just real quick. I think maybe you've semi answered it in your last comment there. Um, I believe this year you guys were a little more strict on. Um, requiring a flu shot for kids. As this COVID shot rolls out for the kids, is there any guidance on if that's gonna be mandatory vaccine or not?
It's not a mandatory. The governor has said that he's not going to make it mandatory. Um, we'll see what happens. There's some talk around the sides about all of a sudden making, you know, some official workers have to have to have it, but right now it's not, it's not done that way. It's gonna be, just like they try to make the flu vaccine. A mandatory and they backed up when all the lawsuits lined up. Um, we'll see what happens here, but. No, I mean, you, the only thing you can do right now is you could require any extracurriculars to get a vaccination or something like that. Um, again, you're going down a certain road. Um, we'll, we'll, we'll cross that bridge as we get there. We'll see what kind of. Um, resistance we have to that if we can get, you know, the herd levels in our building. Keith, your hands up? Sorry, Bob, just use me.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to ask about, um, if you foresee any changes in mask requirements for outdoor activities. Um, as we go through the spring, not necessarily for spectators, more for the athletes themselves. If. I was reading something this morning from the CDC about outdoor transmission, whether we're gonna stay restricted here, or maybe athletes can. Yeah, and you're right. I was at, I was looking at the track meet, baseball game, softball game around me. It was awesome. And but I can't. I was just wondering about the athletes having to wear masks once we get into.
So it's a good question. I asked Carl because I was watching, I was watching baseball game. I watched it in the varsity game, playing Belcher Town, and I'm watching a pitcher who I know is exactly sixty feet. And sixty inches and six inches from the batter, because that's the distance from the, why does he have to have his mask on? And can he pull it down while he's pitching and not have to deal with one less obstacle? And apparent, we got, you know, a parent inquiry, complaint inquiry on that as well. Um, right now it's the MIA's guideline and we're following on the MIA, but I, you know, I asked him to bring up the athletic directors conference, like, can we make reasonable. Modifications. If you're playing center field, you have to have a mask on. You know, if you're at first base and you're holding a runner, maybe you have the mask on, you know, like, can we have, you know, you know, they have the masks on, but they have them on their face. So. It's interpretation of that and in doing that, but you know, we're questioning that as well. Right now we're following under the MIA guidelines for that, so. Um, but I agree, there's some kind of silliness to some of the activities. You're playing tennis in the singles. There's, you know, I mean, there's no one on your, as our tennis team is doing, you know, you need to be wearing a mask, and I would agree, but. Um, you know, we're kind of in a cooperation, in a cooperation with all the league, so we all have to do it together if we're gonna change those rules. So. We'll see what happens. Maybe we'll see that next month. George has got a hand.
I got a hand. So I just want to, and I I just want to uh add something to this because I got, I got an email from the MIAA this afternoon, and I'm just gonna read it. Um, Keith, so there are some highlights from the most recent EEA guidelines as they relate to high school sports. And one of them, it says mandatory facial coverage for all sports during active play except for lower moderate risk sports when outdoors. Where social distancing can be consistently maintained. So this update's going to be reviewed using the MIA governance process before implementation. So. Um, so there may, they may be making exceptions for lower moderate risk sports uh coming, coming down the line. The MIAA just has to review it. From for mask wearing. So. There you go.
Thanks, George. Missy, you have a question?
Uh, just, I guess my, my only concern in those kind of scenarios is that you got somebody who's taking it off. You know, wiping and doing whatever. Now we're gonna put it back on that, that we just have to be kind of mindful with our athletes and letting them know that. This isn't like, let's touch all the outside of our mask and do all this other stuff and then go back and huddle in a group. And and transmit those kind of things. So I I don't think, I agree that there's plenty of distance for those kind of things, but I think we also need to include some education about. How we're doing with the taking them on and taking them off.
I just want to give you a little heads up when you're talking about policies for shots. The, I have a son-in-law that's a Marine and they're in the, where he is, they're not, they don't have to have a shot. The military is not required to have a shot yet. I I can't believe it, but. That's the military. So if that gives you any idea. Um, anybody else got a question? If not, we're gonna go on to FRS retirees want to plant some trees. Darius?
So we 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 received a request from the uh. Uh, Frontier Teachers Retirement, um, I guess, Group Association. Um, and they were asking if we could plant a tree. Um, to remount a memorial tree to honor those retired teachers who have passed away. Um, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna share my screen just so you guys can read the names and such. Um, I guess I can put it in the public reading here. So other people can as well. Um. So basically, they asked if we would plant a tree memorial, memorial, um, the fine teachers who um passed in two thousand twenty. And then they said, there's also a list of, um, there's people who passed in two thousand nineteen. Um. You know, and so looking to plant a tree. And so right now, I mean, I have a good spot for a tree. Um, and. What? Um, man, it. Hasn't it? Here it is. Oh, it's further down. Um. Basically, right now, this tree here was taken out and it fell over in a big storm and it's a, and it's a spot where a tree. Kind of grows very quickly and healthy, um, because it gets a lot of sun. Um, and so we kind of, we have a need for a tree right there, right now. Um, I am concerned um about. I I think my recommendation is that when we start having a plaxi, you have to update. And kind of, you know, I mean, we're gonna. going to, I was wondering if we should just do a general tree in memory of all teachers who have passed, who have served this district, rather than choosing and missing some and creating a plaque that has to be updated every year, you know, um, you know, and that kind of thing on a school property. So, that's not exactly what they wanted, and I'm sure if Bonnie's going to be, Bonnie Harrison's the one who sent us this, is getting this going, and she's going to agree with me on this, but, um, you know, I'd like to, I think we should probably look at generalities to have a memorial tree for all those staff that work here, and then maybe at the school committee meeting, we could say, you know, we could do a public mentioning of who we're honoring this year, um, with that tree. Just one of those, kind of those small things that people forget about. You have to continue to update some, you gotta go out, send the plaque out, get the things and paste them to the thing, and, and then if you miss somebody, you know, extremely, that could be extremely offensive as well, um, you know, that kind of thing. So, that's my editorial of that. Take it from there.
Who's first? Keith, you want to go first?
Go. Could we put on the plaque, uh, this, first world problems, uh, 21st century solution, a website where you could update it, so you don't have to take the plaque off, so that it could always be accessible. The second thing would be, what kind of tree would it be to honor the teachers?
Very symbolic, Keith. I was trying to think of something funny, and then it didn't really work.
Uh, Missy, you have a question? Or just have your?
No, I just forgot to lower it.
That's all right. Does anybody else have a question about planting a nice tree? Who's going to plant it, Darius?
Good question.
Okay.
I mean, we would have to contract with the, with somebody to come out to dig the hole, and, um, right now, there's a stump there, too. We probably can try to see if they'll help us remove that and put the tree in, um, and then they would purchase such a tree. I mean, right now, the birches do very well in that area. Their lifespan's a little bit shorter than an oak, we're probably, and then if it's going to be near the building, you got to have something that's, you know, um, it's landscaping friendly to, toward a building and building friendly, so.
Okay.
That kind of thing, probably. Likely a kind of a birch type of tree. It's pretty and so forth.
Okay, do we have a, we're going to vote on this? A motion in a second?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Who seconded?
Uh, Damian.
Damian, thanks.
Should we, should we put in the minutes, Darius, about having it just a plaque for deceased retirees without any names, or do what Keith says, have a, on the website, a list of retirees who passed away?
We could, I think the website is a...
Can I suggest a plan to be worked out between the superintendent and the retiring teachers association?
I, I don't know, deceased retirees got such a nice ring to it for a plaque.
Okay, Phil? Judy, you could write something up, and, and you could put Darius as, uh, the contact person.
Feels like a principal's job.
It does feel like a principal's job. That's a good point, Darius.
Or George. Okay, we got a motion in a second. Uh, Judy, you want to do a roll call, please?
Sure, Bob?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yep.
Phil?
Yes.
Olivia?
Yep.
Judy, yes. Mary?
Yes.
Damian?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Missy?
Yeah.
Bill?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Thank you. Next, uh, we're going to talk about some E and D funds.
Yes, and thank you for that. That last, you know, my last comment there, trying to be funny, might have been, um, may have been a little harsh, so my apologies if I came out that way. When I tried to hand off a project, when it's a really great project for us to do and stuff, so I was trying to be funny, and that may not have been. Um, so I apologize. So, E and D, the, um, right now, I'm going to, you know, share my screen, and Shelley's going to unmute and jump in when I misstep, actually, do so well. Um, so, as you know, uh, earlier this year, we talked about, um, using $200,000 of E and D to offset the cost of the track, and the track numbers were projected to be coming in at possibly up to $800,000 and change. Um, the track came in at 638, 7, um, and so, we now have a problem, which is kind of a good problem, is that we put money aside to use of E and D, and we need to spend that. If we're not going to spend on a track, we need to spend it on something else. And so, we're proposing with you tonight, how to use that E and D money, moving forward. So, we're basically, what we're looking at here, um, is that, as you knew, we have been paying Berkshire Design, the architect for the track, is not part of that cost of $638,000, $639,000. And we've been paying for that, outside of that, using school choice money. So, um, so yeah, just to get out of the, I'm speaking, Shelley, you know a lot of the brains behind the operation here, um, is to pull that off of school choice and pay for it with E and D, bring up the school choice. If there's an overage, um, small overage on the track, we could just pay for it at school choice, you know, also, um, you know, free up money in that account. The second thing, so I'll go through the whole list and then explain the whole thing, and then you guys can ask questions, because I can't see any of you when I'm presenting. Um, the next thing is, um, the track does need new equipment. Um, the pole vault in the high jump landing equipment is as old as the track. Um, it's, you know, ripping in, in areas, the safety equipment has improved over years, and I think it's the appropriate time when you update the track, update the equipment, and the landing areas are different configurations in the new track, so it also makes, makes sense to be bad at this time as well. Um, the Track Mountain View Landscaping Contract Overage, so their bid came $8,700 and $8,750 over, um, what we had projected for the bid, um, on the, you know, so, it's a small amount there. The next thing is a seven passenger van to replace, I mean, a nine passenger, or I'm putting out there, nine or 14 passenger van replaced the seven passenger van. So, right now, coming up in this one, kind of, how older automobiles go, as I scroll down here, we can see, right? All right, um, we currently have two vans. We have the larger white, um, van that says Frontier Regional, you've all seen, it's like a mini bus, and we have, what many of you may not know, is we own a 2007 Chrysler Town and Country van. Look at that beauty. All right? This van is primarily used to transport, um, special education students to job sites in other, um, smaller field trips, where there may be only, um, two or three people going. We've also used it for extra cars, for, um, clubs and that kind of stuff, when we needed a little bit more room. I would like to, to update this van to a larger model and do something, and this is, again, only for getting the idea across, but this is, you know, an example of a nine passenger van. Don't look at make or model, um, or any of that sort, but the idea of going, something that's, is going to be able to be translated to, for more activities for our school. Um, one of the reasons for a nine passenger van instead of the 14 one, it's a little bit more nimble, um, and, you know, the van can be more difficult to drive, so, you know, putting that in the case, and it's also, you know, probably a better gas mileage than another van, but we're still kind of debating whether or not to do that or a 14 passenger. So, that's what we're discussing there. And then, the last part is, right now, we have a capital request, and this is kind of the one where we, we going, changing our vote. We have a capital request to the towns, and, and as you know, we, we, the way we're approaching capital fixes in our buildings is we have a three-pronged approach. We have the Big Six, which we're taking, those are the Big Six projects, the track being the largest of them, um, where we have a, we're getting a bond, we're using E and D, and then the last, and then the final one is that we are, you know, going to the towns continually for, um, you know, direct capital warrant article request. Um, given this year that we have this extra money, um, and some of the towns are, are struggling, um, you know, to meet the, the requests that we're making this year for capital requests, you know, for us to look for another project when they have this issue, I think it would make sense for us to say, you know, let's withdraw the capital request to the towns, and we'll pay for ourselves this year, because this is information we didn't have when we put that, that request out to the towns. It made sense at the time to do the three, the three, um, the three-pronged approach we were doing after our capital, but right now, to add on other projects, you know, when we put this out to the town and, and such, in this particular year, I think we should hold that back. So, a lot said there with a lot of different questions. I'm going to come back to the screen where I can see everyone. You know, and, yeah.
Questions? Judy?
Can I just get that last dollar amount, Darius? I'm sorry, I'm putting it in the minutes. Was it $35,000?
$35,000 is what we've requested from the towns.
Yep, okay. Not really a question, but.
Yeah. Shelley, did I miss anything? You probably would have said it better.
No, you got it. It was great.
Phil?
Phil? I'm sorry.
So, that's all right. So, um, I just wanted to talk about the long-suffering, missing fourth prong in your analysis, um, which is the, uh, the, the, the long-suffering Frontier Capital Stabilization Fund. Um, and, and I, I, you know, I just remember sitting in all those capital meetings and everything, and we all agreeing that we were going to start it up and fund it, and it, the funding part of it always just, we keep on not doing that, and, um, it makes a lot of sense to do that. So, you know, so, so I, I would propose, you know, the $35,000 capital request is small enough that I don't, I, I, you know, at least in my town, that's, nobody's, nobody's going to, uh, I can't, I can't imagine, you know, substantial opposition to that. Um, and, and I think it's small enough in the other towns as well. I would like to see us start, to start doing things for, for the Capital Stabilization Fund in our own school. Um, and, because I, you know, just, it, it's worked out so well in Conway, having one for the elementary school, you know, and, and one that is used as part of the budget process every year and funded and all that. So, this seems like an opportunity to stick, you know, and I would say, rather than withdrawing the, the, um, the, the, the capital warrant, to, to take that $35,000 and start breathing life into our own Capital Stabilization Fund. So, just, just saying.
Bill, I see your hands up, sir.
Yeah, um, I have to take the opposite approach that Phil just took, and I, I'll come down on the side with Darius on this one. I think, um, with all that's happened in the towns, the towns were extremely forthcoming with, with their portion of the money to help us pay with, pay for COVID-related costs and all kinds of things going on in the town. I, I, I think that the optics and the gesture here of us withdrawing that capital article and paying for it ourselves with money that has come along, I think it is worth far more to us than the $35,000 is. I think it's, I think it's just the right thing to do, is to, to take that, that capital article off the warrant and pay for it ourselves, since we have the ability to pay for it ourselves, instead of spending money on something else and, and asking towns for money at the same time, just pay for it ourselves.
I, I could tell you, Phil, that maybe Conway's not, their portion of the $35,000's not a problem, and I could probably speak for Waitley, it's probably not a problem, but other towns may have a problem with it. And, yeah, it's, it's only X amount of dollars, but in some of these situations, um, I think that, I mean, I think Darius has a good plan about taking it off. Will look good on the town meeting floor by withdrawing them? I mean, I think that, that's worth, that's worth a lot, too, so, um, does anybody else have any questions? Okay.
I, I, Darius and I obviously have not talked about this, um, piece. We did talk about the importance of capital stabilization, especially when we're talking about, you know, roof replacement, and I know that that's part of the Big Six, but that project could end up being larger than what the original financing was, and, you know, I, I do think we recognize the importance of planning for those larger things for the future, not just picking off at the smaller things, um, you know, and, and we certainly, Darius and I did not talk about a number here, but I'd also don't see a reason why you couldn't change the E and D number. This is a recommendation that we're having right now, and if the committee felt strong enough that this is something that we need to do, um, we add X amount to this number and we increase it. I don't think it's going to be an issue for us to do that. Um, we do have some surplus funds because of various things, transportation, personnel changes, um, our school choice number, our revenue looks to be higher, our regional transportation reimbursement looks to be higher. So, you know, I definitely think that's something we could broach right now, uh, if the committee wanted to explore that further. I also don't know, Darius, can we, we could do a second vote for E and D in June, right, and go and ask the towns? I don't know if that makes sense to split it up, but.
Correct. We could table any portion of this except the, um, I don't, hey, I got to turn and look at the, like, that town down the wall, except for the town meeting, stuff that goes to town meeting. So, I mean, all this other stuff could be tabled to June, to discuss further, but I hear what you're saying, Shelley, is that, you know, we could, if we want to start to, um, put money into the stabilization account, my concern on that is that in order for that to be an effective amount of money, that's a lot you're going to have to put in there, when we are trying to right now. And I know what you're saying, Phil, we could, we could save that $35,000, or whatever number we make up, um, or want to add into it, but, you know, we're kind of like, right now, as we have the money, we're spending the money on projects. There are other projects on the list, but I just kind of felt like, if for us to suddenly add more projects on our E and D list this late in the game, you know, you're about to also approve the fact that we got the gym floor. Were you spending last year's money as well in going with, you know, Bill just said, the optics are like, wow, we got a lot of money suddenly. You don't realize that we saved and didn't do anything last year, um, and they didn't go after the town the same year. I, I just, you know, and I know what was said is that Sunderland and Deerfield are in a tighter spot, um, and probably could use a little relief when you're talking about $20,000. What's $20,000 of the capital projects they could do somewhere else? Um, and for, um, you know, for, uh, Sunderland's what, six or seven, um, thousand dollars is what we're talking about, their portion. So, um, anyway, so, that's my, kind of my thoughts on that. You know, we start, you know, right now, we're using E and D in that way. We, it is basically a, you know, using it as a, uh, a fund to rotate, um, to deal with capital expenditures. Very transparent. They actually have a say in it. Remember, when we approved this, we do have to send a letter to the select boards for them to take action within 30 days. Okay, so, um, you know, if they disagree with it, you know, that kind of thing is, um, they have to have a meeting, it's very hard to disagree with it, but there's a lot of transparency there. We're not just putting money away and spending it on our own. We're kind of working with the towns, because Shelley is right. We started talking about the roof project, the money we have in this grant, the guy who was up there said, you got a 25-year-old flat roof, you're going to start having major problems, and the money you put aside for this isn't going to be enough to do the whole thing. So, that's a problem down the road. You know, I also got a tennis court that's almost unplayable, that's, you know, just got worse and worse over the last two years. That's another quarter of a million-dollar project down the road, so there's going to be a lot of other stuff that $35,000 in the count, or $50,000 in the count, is not going to be as important as trying to keep a great working relationship with the towns, um, and transparency.
Keith?
Just in terms of funding mechanisms, and, and to what Phil was saying, would it be Frontier that would have to create the, the stabilization fund, or would it be more on the, the individual towns, stable, pre-existing stabilization funds going to both the, their local elementary school and Frontier, rather than Frontier trying to build that? I, I just, I'm, I'm wondering where that, that would be allocated out.
I think that's a good question, Keith. Um, my understanding of it is that Frontier would establish the fund. The towns, I think, also have to approve that we're establishing this fund, because they do pay into our assessments. Um, but then it would be our responsibility, how we fund it, whether it's funded, E and D, budget, and other pot of money. Um, and if it is E and D, then we then ask the towns again, as Darius just said, um, to approve or question or, or deny. Um, I don't think we have a capitalization fund set up. We have a regional transportation stabilization fund, but I don't think we have a capital stabilization fund, so I'd have to look into a little bit more also for the legality of it.
If, if you could, though, Shelley, because I, I think when we, when we looked at this a few years ago, we did have one, it was already old then, and it had $11,000 in it. And, um, and that was, that was years ago, and that's just my recollection of it, um, and, you know, And, um, and that was, that was years ago, and that's just my recollection of it. Um, and, you know, it, the, 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 I, I, and I'll just speak for Conway. The, the only way that, the, that Conway could have access to the town's capital stabilization was to have its own. Uh, or, or at least that was certainly the preference of the town bookkeepers and whatnot. So, that's what we did and, um, and, and, and the advantage of that at town meeting is that, you know, you get to say, rather than, than, than an expense coming out of your assessment, um, it, it comes out of capital stabilization. And, uh, so that's, it tends to be, the withdrawals from it tend to be easier to pass. You still have to vote money then to, 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 to go into it, but, um,
But like, so.
But it, it, it tends to be easier to vote money to go into it, because at that point, you're not talking about a specific item. You're usually talking about the, just the generic need to take care of the schools, which is always a good thing. So.
Right. And, and as I remember, I'm thinking back to Decker, uh, Bob Decker, who kind of explained to us, as I'm trying to remember, you guys remember that conversation where there's a certain kind of voting in order to actually access those funds out of that as well. So we'll have to kind of get refreshed in the law there. The issue, if we're gonna do that though, it's again, you start to go into what is your funding mechanism for capital projects? So if we're gonna do, if we're gonna start putting money into a fund, and that's how we're going to fund our projects, you, you mean, we're gonna start having all these piles of monies in different places with not enough to do in any one pile, but, so if you want to go that route, then you gotta kind of establish, and you gotta, gotta make sure the towns are on board with it, that we're gonna put a hundred thousand dollars a year and dedicate a hundred thousand dollars a year or more into capital stabilization, and we're gonna fund that every single year. You know what I mean? And build that up. And, you know, that's, you're, you're talking about bigger numbers than, than that, and we could do that. Right now, we're using the, we're doing the same kind of idea with E and D, um, but you could be saving up for a much bigger project, I guess, in those kind of terms, so.
And, and I, and I would suggest that the, in the thirty to fifty range, because I think that's more doable. It just takes longer, but, but, I mean, generally, that is best practices, and that is how most do it, is a separate capital budget and a separate operating budget, and that's how it works through, through a cap, through a vigorous capital stabilization fund. So that's.
Okay, so, can we do this to kind of, if you don't mind me trying to direction it? So have Shelley and I look into for the June meeting, the Capital Stabilization Fund. And after looking into it, we can come back with a recommendation about taking some money out of E and D and putting into the Capital Stabilization Fund, and then, and start talking about long-term effects there. Outside of that, looking back at the E and D list, can, it, does the committee feel okay with voting, you know, voting that for, you know, we, the only one that's time-sensitive is, they're time-sensitive.
Town meetings?
Well, they're all time-sensitive, because we do have to encumber funds by June thirtieth, but the thirty-five thousand is what's most pressing, because Conway is first on June fifth, and we wouldn't meet again until after Conway's meeting. Um, so we at least need to resolve that piece, and that is for the duct cleaning in the gym and the auditorium and the stage curtains that we already asked the town to cover on warrants.
Like, I would, I would say that I, I, I support Phil in his request for a continued review, you know, a review of, or a plan to, um, create capital stabilization. We have definitely bounced it around a long, a bunch of times. We've talked about it in various subcommittees, and we've talked about it in group committee, and it's a solid plan that leaves some really positive results. Um, same thing happened in Sunderland. But I'm inclined for us to move forward with the proposal as presented. Pull the two town warrants, pull the town warrants for the cleaning, the, address the other, the total vote itself and move on to the next thing, which we have to talk about.
Are you looking for a second, Judy?
Uh, yeah, I'm looking for a second. Thank you, Bob.
I'll be a second for you.
Thanks.
Darius, you want to take this other thing off the?
Let me stop, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
I'm gonna back up, because people were talking about it, and I think it missed the hook.
Okay, so you ready for a roll call vote? Everybody understands what we're voting on?
Any other questions, Keith?
I do, I just want to clarify. So we're, we're approving all the lists that Darius took down, and we're going to discuss opening up a, a, a stabilization fund within Frontier.
Yes.
Dog approved. Okay, roll call vote. Bob?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yeah.
Phil?
Yes.
Olivia?
Yes.
Judy, yes. Mary?
Yes.
Damien?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Missy?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Okay.
Next is, uh, the awarding of the gym floor contract.
Shelley, you want to take this one?
Yep. Nope, it's fine. Um, so we put the gym floor project that was approved with last year's E and D, that went out to bid in, I want to say, early February. Um, Bill did a walkthrough with any interested parties. It wasn't a requirement to visit the school. It was just an open meeting. Um, so he did have some folks come over April break and take a look. Uh, we received four bids, um, and we do need to award, I think, by the end of this week, so we are looking for a vote on that contract tonight. Um, we had allocated thirty-five thousand dollars of E and D for the project. The company, um, that is the lowest winning bidder is Gymnasium Floors Incorporated out of Stoughton, Mass. Um, their bid was twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred forty-three dollars. Uh, there's some additional expenses outside of just finishing the floor, um, which my understanding is, you know, it's stripping, um, putting the new logos down and then sealing. Um, so there's other things that go along with that, some electrical and those kind of pieces. So the total project right now is still coming in under the thirty-five thousand. Um, those smaller pieces, Bill and I will handle, handle directly. We're gonna be probably right around thirty-two thousand for a whole. Um, but we do need to have you all formally accept the bid and award the contract. Um, I know Darius did check, uh, at least one of their references, and we did send out, I believe, um, their bid information to you all, so I can take questions if you have them.
Do you put it under thirty-two thou, just at thirty-two thousand dollars, Shelley, or do you want me to actually put the bid amount plus incidentals?
I think you just have to bid the contract, because you've already approved the thirty-five thousand through E and D, so I think we can manage the rest of that. So the twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred forty-three, because we're gonna handle those other pieces on our own.
Do I have a second?
Where's the first? Me?
Bill.
Me.
Oh, thank you. I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Bob?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Olivia?
Yes.
Judy, yes. Mary?
Yes.
Uh, Damien?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Missy?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Next is, uh, School Committee Anti-Racism Professional Development. And who's gonna take this?
Go ahead, Olivia.
Um, so, um, uh, earlier on, I think a few meetings ago, um, when Jen, uh, Smiths shared her, um, the list of all the different things they had been doing over the, um, elementary school, um, you know, a lot of people were looking into doing some different things. Um, and I think that I had, I had brought, I had spoken to Darius and said that, you know, I know that we're all really, um, committed to having a school that um, i- is as welcoming and inclusive to everyone as possible. And so, um, wanted us to think about a way that we could either take one of her suggestions and yeah, make a commitment to, um, either, you know, read of something or do of something or watch of something. I'm sure, you know, I mean, if you're a teacher right now, I know Keith, like, you've bid to, done a million of these, you know, different things right now, um, and maybe at some point, you know, we could make a plan to come together not on screen, because I don't feel like that would be productive at all, but just make a commitment to, um, choose a way to broaden our own horizons, um, and then share that with the group. Um, perhaps, you know, maybe over the summer, you know, and then at our, you know, before our first meeting or around then, come together and, and talk about that. I just think that is a guiding force, you know, um, for different situations in our community that, um, it shows that we're doing the work as well. Um, so I didn't know what you guys thought about that, and if we could, um, you know, make a commitment or, uh, you know, plan to make a commitment about that.
I'm, I'm, I'm with you, Olivia. Who said something? Who else? Anybody else want to say something?
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I do too.
Keith?
I think the idea of some, doing something, I, uh, doing another online training where we, on Zoom would be problematic, but maybe if, um, summer, everyone committing to reading one of the, the readings that the students are doing, so we, we know what, what they're involved in, we can see it firsthand, might be a good way to start.
I agree. Since what we would be doing wouldn't be something that needed public comment, the reason we're meeting right now online is so that as many people as possible, we don't have to limit it. Um, but where we would, you know, maybe get together and just share what we had done, that could be done in, you know, a big circle altogether in person, where we just share our, our thoughts, you know, whether it's inside the school or outside the school, um, that we wouldn't have to do. I'm with you on the no more online trainings.
Olivia, can I ask, do you think it would be facilitated in the same manner that other professional development is by either Kelsey or Amanda or whoever, you know, like some other, is this a self-guided, um, reflection project? Or we just kind of wing it and make it up? Which I'm fine with.
Yeah, that's a great question. I mean, I, I think that's what I was wanting to, um, put up for, um, a thought, you know, I thought that what Jen shared had some really good starting points, but I also really like, you know, especially where we're the Frontier School Committee, and we know that the school's summer lists and different things that the kids will be reading and bringing into their, um, uh, purview for, um, what they'll need to know for the fall, that maybe, you know, taking on one of those, you know, books about that would, would be helpful as well. Um, and I didn't necessarily have a, a structure that I just thought that it would, I, I was interested in, in doing this and doing something where we all got each other's opinions about this and could talk about it in a way that wasn't broadcast, um, to everybody, um, and where we could share our feelings about, you know, the different things that, you know, the kids are reading or that the teachers are learning and, and where we come from in that, and just acknowledging our own places in that. Um, and so, I know everybody's busy, but I, I was hoping that if we could commit to make a plan to either do, you know, one of the readings that Jen said, or, you know, what the school is doing, and then just to get together, you know, and, and be able to unpack those.
Keith?
I would suggest that, uh, we could do one reading over the summer and then meet for thirty minutes to one hour before one of our regularly scheduled meetings in the fall, where we could discuss amongst ourselves. Um, and, and I don't know how, if, if it needs to be facilitated, or if, if, you know, just, is, I think Olivia's just saying, everyone come in, just give your thoughts about what you've read. Everyone can speak and talk amongst yourselves, and then, because there's no official policymaking, there's no decision-making, and then we can go into our regularly scheduled, scheduled meeting, so it's not so, um, uh, time-consuming or difficult for people.
I think that's a great idea.
Good suggestion.
Um, so, um, I'm up for doing the, the thing with the Frontier, you know, taking one of their readings, since we're on Frontier School Committee, I think that's a really great idea, Keith, if everyone else is up for doing that over the summer, taking on one of those, um, well, you know, multicultural readings or something, um, that, um, the school has, um, assigned in that sort of thing to the students. Um, and then maybe before our September meeting, meet for about now.
Darius, can you help us get those books? Okay. Darius suggests. Well, sign me up, Lynn.
So I'm guessing those will come out pretty soon, you know, the, the read, the summer reading list thing, so, um, then we'll be able to pick those.
Perfect.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks. Okay, um, uh, we're gonna review, uh, Director Administration's contract. Um, the subcommittee, uh, met. It was a, it was a great meeting, and we were very successful, we thought. I was on the committee from Frontier, and Judy was also, and then we had, um, one each from the other, the other towns, um, Jessica from Sunderland. Um, Phil, were you from Conway? Were you on it?
I am from Conway.
I know you're from Conway. Um, who is?
Yes, yes, I was, I was, I was a, I was a, I was a member of that.
And who was from Deerfield?
Harry.
Who?
Harry.
And then, um, we had, uh, Bethany from Waitley.
Yeah.
And, but I thought it went well, um, do we have, I, I sent the message, Darius, do we have to go into executive session, Darius, to talk about anything in particular, or do we just tell what we came up with for monies, or do we have to go into executive session for that?
No, it has to be open session.
Okay.
Yeah, you don't have to go into executive to do that, but if you were to, if you want to discuss the negotiation of it, you would go into executive session. You have to come back to vote the final contract.
I personally don't think we have to go into executive session to talk about it. I mean, we came, we came up a set of numbers, Shelley came up with a set of numbers, and correct me if I'm wrong, Shelley, that I think we were on the final year, uh, we were fifty dollars off. And, um, and basically what we're gonna do is, um, end the contract that she has now, correct me if I'm wrong again, correct, end the contract that she has now, and we came up with a five-year contract for Shelley. And I don't have the numbers in front of me, but Shelley probably.
I, I'll do them, because it's uncomfortable for Shelley to do that. That's not fair to do that to her.
Well, I know. I feel like I should excuse myself from the meeting at this point.
So you can say your screen off, Shelley, if you want.
No.
So what we did, go ahead. So, so what we did is we looked at comparable, um, size districts and, um, average salaries of, of business directors and business service, um, people in Western Massachusetts to, to like-sized districts. And, um, Shelley was very much on the lower end of that. Um, lower mid-end of that, not the lowest end, but definitely on the lower end, and especially five, um, five districts as well. Do, you know, you have, some people are making, um, are only in charge of one budget instead of five. So that was all discussed, and so basically, the, the committee agreed to, um, move Shelley, who's supposed to make a hundred and nine next year, to make a hundred, move a ten thousand to a hundred and nineteen um, for next year, and then do a five-year contract at two and a half percent for the rest, the remainder of those years. Does that make sense? So, um, so yeah, so make a hundred and nineteen thousand the first year, a hundred and twenty-one the following year, and two, two and a half percent moving forward there. Um, and that was decided that the one debate that happened in the meeting was whether or not to spread it out, the growth over the five years, or to make the correction, to put her, and this will put her, um, in the mid, upper mid-range, not the highest, but the upper mid-range to her peers in the valley. So, um, any questions on that there?
And just would like to say that this was, that, that, that the premise behind doing this was the, uh, unanimous belief that, uh, that, that Shelley is excellent at her current position and that we want to keep her. and that we want to keep her there. So that was, that was really the theme of the whole thing.
And it's a, I didn't say it's a five-year contract, so.
Yes.
Keith, you have a question?
I'd echo what Phil said about, I think Shelley's doing a great job. I'm very, very happy. But just for open, total transparency, what would be the districts that we were comparing to?
We looked at Mahar, Greenfield, Hampshire Regional, Mohawk, Pioneer, and looking, and each, each one of those as well, there is some factors. There's some where the person only works 40 days a week. There's some where the person doesn't live remotely. You know, so some things were adjusted on those. But those are the, those are the schools we looked at overall. We had the list of almost everybody in, but those are the more comparative schools. Looking at, you know, Amherst, North Hampton, those were also looked at as well. We didn't look at like Springfield or anything like that, that doesn't fit that.
Right, it sounds like you were working geographically to a comparable district right around us. All right, thank you.
But the one comparable, though, that sticks with me, that I'd just like to share with you, Keith, is that with, with this new current adjustment, this new five-year thing, she's now roughly at about what Gateway pays theirs. So, and Gateway is a smaller district, and like a lot smaller. So, you know, that's, that's a good comparison, and shows, shows what ballpark we're still in, so.
And I think, we said this at the Deerfield meeting, but it's one of those things, it's a financial issue that administrators have in schools, because you get, you get locked in, and if you can't renegotiate sometimes while comparing the rest of the market, the only way you can get an increase is to leave. So if Shelley was to leave us this, this year or next year, you're going to be starting the market about, just about where she's at here, maybe slightly lower. But, you know, that's just the way the market, the market works, and how people get locked in, and the only way you can do things is to move. So, or to do things like this. And so when people are saying, what are you doing here? Shelley was hired at a lower mark, she had no prior experience, and, you know, we took advantage of that in the sense of, you don't have experience, you're going to get a lower amount. She's proven that, she's proven her worth, as you've stated, I'll say it too. And, you know, deserves to have that, to have that readjusted, adjusted.
Anybody else? Mary?
Yep, I would, I would just like to say, you know, I like, I like doing it that way, where we increase it on the front end, it makes more sense and is easy to explain. But also, you know, while it's uncomfortable for Shelley to have to sit here, I also want her to hear the good things. And from my standpoint, it's not just numbers and budgets. We've had people in the past that can do the numbers and the budgets, but, you know, I just feel you're so professional in your role, in your presentations, in your interactions with the select boards and finance committees. We've heard just wonderful things. And leadership qualities within your own office and personnel that you have to work with is all done very professionally. So I'm a huge fan, and definitely in favor of the five-year contract.
Thank you. Thank all of you. Very awkward and uncomfortable situation.
Okay, who wants to make the motion?
I will.
Is that Phil?
Yep.
One second. All right. I can't see the screen and do, and type at the same time, so. Roll call, you ready, the kids ready?
Yep.
Okay, Bob?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Olivia?
Yes.
Judy, yes? Mary?
Yes.
Damien?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Missy?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Two finalists.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Shelley.
Thank you.
Congrats, welcome to the crew for another five years!
Okay, reports. I have nothing, Lynn, do you have anything from the collaborative?
Not a whole lot, they're just doing some internal speculation and still trying to get an executive director on board. They're going to have, you have two finalists now, we're going to be talking to them next week.
Thank you. George?
Hi, so I shared my report with everybody, just to highlight a few things. So once again, to reiterate, we did have our prom last Friday. We had it at the building, we had it in the courtyard. It was, it was, it was a resounding success, it was wonderful. It was great to have, to see all the kids having such a great time. The parents that helped out with their decor, with decorating and with organizing. We're incredibly lucky to have so many people that pitched into, just to make it such a giant success. Our teachers that helped out, our senior class advisor, Melissa Strokey. I mean, it was, honestly, it was just, it was wonderful. And we're going to be continuing with a lot of different events for the seniors throughout this month. Graduation is still slated to happen on the 4th of June. There are going to, there's going to be another, there's going to be another parade with cars that, that same week, that Thursday, there's going to be an awards, a virtual awards ceremony that, that week on the Wednesday. There's going to be a senior clapout day, where they're going to be going to the elementary schools to visit their elementary school teachers, and we're going to do it outside. There's going to be a senior breakfast, so there are a number of things happening, and a number of events happening for our seniors. We're also in the process of doing, or we're hiring, we just hired successfully, we just hired a middle school math teacher and a high school math teacher. We're in the process of interviewing for special ed, special ed positions. And we're also in the process of interviewing and doing demo lessons for world languages position, or for one world language position, I should say. And we're in the middle of MCAS. MCAS is happening as we speak, it's going to be, we've got 10th grade math happening for the next two days. Middle school's happening in a week or so. So there's a lot going on this month. In the report, I also shared a link to the senior calendar for, for, so you have, so you have a sense as to when things are happening as well. But things are going, things are, things are going well, it's busy. And, and it's, it's, it's getting to be an exciting time of year. So it's, it's a lot of fun as well. So, yeah.
Thanks, George. Darius, do you have anything to share with us?
Only what I said at the Deerfield meeting. My last new superintendent induction program is Thursday, so after that, I'm ready to run the district.
You'll be a senior, they'll be calling you.
That's, that's pretty funny.
Yeah, it's been three years for those monthly meetings on that, so just that way. It was a lot of work, so just mentioning it.
All right. I have nothing else. A motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Everybody raised their hand. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.